Okay, the meeting will come to order. We do have a quorum present. Has every, all the board members had a chance to look over the minutes? And do I have any additions or changes to those minutes? You have them? They were right there in front of us somewhere. I haven't seen them. There, you didn't get to see them. We couldn't get on the city's website, or couldn't navigate it this weekend, so we didn't get a chance to read the minutes, other than the copy we've been presenting this morning, or this afternoon.
Could you clarify the date of the minutes to which you refer?
Monday, October the 6th. November the 3rd, 1:30 PM. Monday, November the 3rd. Mr. Adams, have you read them? Okay, do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Adams to approve the minutes, seconded by Mr. Turner. All those in favor, right hand. It's unanimous. Minutes of our last meeting are approved. They, we're here to consider and take actions on matters relating to zoning for proposed use of property described as 5.510 acres tract occupying the Jay Ebert Survey 680 Abstract 0172 in San Angelo, Tom Green County, Texas, for the transloading and storing of products used in the oil and gas industry, including pursuant, one, pursuant to local government code, section 211.01.010D, city code, section 2.07.063D, and zoning ordinance, section 214B3, in the matter of an appeal that alleges error in a decision or determination made by an administrative official to wit the appeal of Jesse Martinez, Etta, Mark Thiemann, Dennis Graffa, Chris Cornell, H.R. Wardlaw III, alleging error in the determination of Planning and Development Services Director that the proposed silica frac sand operation is permitted in light manufacturing zoning district on the aforementioned property providing for thee. Okay. First of all, today, our purpose here is to designate the parties of interest. The appellate will be those just named. Jesse Martinez, Etta, Mark Thiemann, Dennis Graffa, Chris Cornell, H.R. Wardlaw III. The applicant? And I don't have the applicant listed.
You might explain that we're covering A, B, C, D, and E at this time?
Right.
And that we're, perhaps you might suggest that you're calling for those who wish to identify themselves as parties to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Bowling.
You're welcome.
As Ms. Bowling said, we are here to identify the parties, and we'll go through A, B, C, D, and E. I'll let the parties identify themselves.
Good afternoon, board members. I'm Sam Allen. I'm with the Jackson Walker Law Firm. We represent the applicant, who's the appellate, I guess you would say. It's actually South Orient Properties LLC. It's owned by Lee Fluger. And so, our firm represents them, and we make our appearance in this matter.
Thank you, sir. We will refer to Mr. Fluger as the applicant. Is Mr. Martinez here today?
Yes, thank you, and we are here just to move the appeal forward. Myself and those other persons that have been named, and we will be contesting the ruling.
Okay, would you, would you name those, sir?
Myself, Jesse Martinez, Mark Thiemann, Chris Cornell, H.R. Wardlaw III, and Dennis Graffa.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Parties of interest.
Are there any other agreed parties that feel that they should also be considered an appellate? We're going to set a reasonable time and date for the appeal hearing at this time, and I'll hear Mr. Martinez and Mr. Allen. If you have any reason that this shouldn't be, or should, there should be another date set, other than our next meeting, which will be the first Monday in January. I'll let the applicant go first.
Thank you. The only consideration that we had was the holidays, and the way those shorten your, shorten the amount of working days and other time. It seemed to us that the February date might be more appropriate, and might provide for a little more prepared presentation to the board. But we'll be ready to proceed under any schedule that you set.
Are you suggesting then, the first Monday in February?
That's our-
I don't have that date in front of me, but... The 3rd? Okay, Monday, the 3rd, February, the 3rd?
Yes, sir, that's our thought, our suggestion.
Okay, thank you, sir.
There would actually be the 2nd.
Okay, February, the 2nd, I'll correct that. That's the first Monday in February, which is the 2nd. Mr. Wardlaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I am one of the parties' appellantants in this case, and also one of the attorneys. We have co-counsel, Gaddy Cho, who's not here today, with Webster's and Sparks. And so, I really can't speak for him, other than, he's a real busy lawyer, and he did tell me, though, that January the 5th would be fine with him. So that's all we could agree on here today, is January the 5th. So I don't know what his schedule is, but I know he's out of town most of the time. And superimposed upon, and we need to ask if everybody else can be here, but obviously the most, it's just as important that all the members of the ZBA certify that they can be here, so that we know we have a quorum, and we know we have enough members, really a full board, so we can decide this important issue.
Okay. We'll just poll the board members at this time. Mr. John, can you be here?
Yes.
February the 2nd? Mr. Rort?
Where's I know?
I also can.
I can.
Mr. Turner, Mr. Adams?
He's wanting January, though.
Well, that's all hypothetical. He doesn't know whether some, one of his members can be here or not, but we can't.
I won't make the January meeting.
We can't, we don't know, we don't know about Mr. Cho. That's the problem. And so, I don't think we should be penalized about that. What is wrong with the January meeting, other than the fact they don't want it in January?
We think that the more time you have, we, excuse me, I retract that. I believe that the more time you have to prepare, the better. And I also believe that this being the 1st of December, he has all of December, all of January, to arrange his calendar to make that meeting, it's of great importance, as you said.
Well, hypothetically, what if Mr. Cho can't be here? Would you be willing to either have a special meeting, or postpone it another month to the next regular scheduled meeting? Because he needs to be here, he's going to be making the presentation.
I would say that this board would consider that. But if, if we made any change like that, I would think that we would need to make that at the January meeting, and then stick to it.
My only comment is that if the February date appears to be inconvenient, or a conflict, we'll be glad to work with the board and with Mr. Cho, Mr. Wardlaw, on timing.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I know there's a lot of people that are disappointed, that expected to have an answer today, or get this started today, but we have an order, we have to go in, and I'm inexperienced at this type of, conducting this type of meeting, so I'll take the heat for that. I didn't know, I thought last time, at our last meeting, that it would work this way, but I've been informed that it won't work this way, so we'll have to do it in order, and I'll do the best I can to keep it straight, and do what we should do. And I'm sorry if I wasted anybody's time, or gotten anybody expecting something that's not going to happen. But we do need to, item C, give due notice of the appeal hearing to parties of interest. D, give public notice of the appeal hearing. E, establish protocol for conducting the appeal hearing. Now, I'd like to keep this as brief as we can, but I know Mr. Wardlaw is interested in item E, and I'm sure Ms. Bowling will have a response. Mr. Wardlaw, would you like to go first?
Sure.
I have a question, if I might. So we are, just so that I'm sure, that I'm sure, are we not going to set the appeal date for the, for February? We're going to come back and look at that date later?
No, sir, we, I should back up again. We should have a motion and set this, appeal for this hearing for, I think we all agreed, for February, this, Monday, February the 2nd.
I'll make a motion to set the date for February 2nd.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Adams, seconded by Mr. Turner, to set the appeal hearing for February, Monday, February the 2nd, at 1:30, right here in the McNeese Convention Center. All those in favor? It's unanimous.
What is the date of notice for the meeting? If we come into January, and we find out February's not going to work, we're going to do something else, but what kind of notice do you have to have for the appeal hearing?
The statute and our ordinance require public notice, and notice, due notice to the parties. So we envision sending notice that we would normally do with the 72 hours notice. We also will advise the parties in interest by mail. And was it your intention to send notice to property owners within 200 feet as well?
So if we had, if we set it today, and then we come in January, and we find out a bunch of people are not going to be able to come, and we have to set another date, we have plenty of time for notice?
Yes, correct.
Mr. Wardlaw, would you speak into the microphone?
Haven't said anything yet.
I know, but you didn't want to go, so...
Sorry about that, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have three or four important items I need to talk about. The first one is, I've got a copy of the local, a treatise on the local government code in Texas, and I want to speak to you about that, because I think we're already getting off track, and I'm worried about it in the future. We are a home rule city, as most of you know, and a home rule city is allowed to make its own laws and determinations about things, unless it's in violation of the state constitution, or some other state statute that clearly overrides the local law. And, you know, the first thing's already come up, is the thing that you showed me about the voting, voting membership. I don't know, I don't know if the other side is right or wrong about that, we hadn't had the opportunity to brief it, because we were not given anything in advance. And that brings up a point, we need to all be, all be giving everybody copies of everything, and setting out our positions. We don't, it's not right to be ambushed, or not notified of things. And I'd like to, if everybody, if you're willing, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to give everybody a copy of the, this treatise on the home rule, so that you'll understand it. Because what I don't want is, I don't want somebody coming up there at the hearing on the merits, and saying that what we're reading here in our zoning ordinance is not, is not what you need to take into consideration. It has to be some, some state law, or some case, or something, out of the clear blue sky that they've come up with. And so, I think everybody needs to understand on this ZBA board, that we are a home rule city, and what the, what the legal ramifications of that are. And so, I prepared a copy for everybody of that, if I may give this to you at this time.
Bring it to us.
I'm not sure what the issue is, but we need to just stay within the parameters of the posted item. We're here to set the hearing, and under the zoning ordinance, which is the, our zoning ordinance, we are conducting this matter, we're setting as under 207.063, the appeal to the board, which articulates that the board sets the reasonable time and place, and it also mirrors state law, 211.010D. So if, I don't, I don't recommend that we waiver from this posted item. I'm not sure what, what Mr. Wardlow wishes to discuss, but I don't believe it's a posted item for today.
This is, this is what Mr. Wardlow's talking about? Have it marked with a star? If you, it's a, what you gave me? Local government code?
Is there a section cited? This is a paper. What section of the law?
I think it's page-
But I, I think if, if I might, for the, for the sake of keeping us on track, we have bylaws that instruct us on how we are to, to act and to govern. And I understand, though I may understand what Mr. Wardlow is saying about individual home rule governments, I think what we need to focus on is what our own bylaws say today, so that we can move through this process. This may be something we can look at today, look at later, but I don't think it's something we need to be considering today, because it, in my opinion, and I could be wrong, it does not merit what we have shown up here today to do, and it disrupts the spirit of what we're here to do.
Right, and if we're here on, now, have we reached number D? Is that why?
We've reached E.
Or, excuse me, number E, the protocol?
Establishing protocol for conducting-
Right, okay.
The appeal hearing.
Well, enunciating that we are establishing the protocol, I would recommend that we follow our own bylaws. Our bylaws are available to the public, they've been in place for a number of years, and section 5.06 discusses the procedure for, that we have in place now, for the board to use for conducting a hearing. It's very, very specific. So perhaps if you are addressing, how should this, what is the protocol? We would be following the protocol set out in our bylaws.
I'm not addressing what is the protocol. I have the bylaws right in front of me.
Right.
Mr. Wardlaw simply wanted to give his input on, he doesn't think that's correct, so I'm letting him speak, but I don't know which way we'll go with it, at this point.
May I respond to that quickly?
Go ahead.
I'm not really, I'm not really giving you this today to get into an argument on our procedure right now, but I'll, when we get to a hearing on the merits in February, whenever that is, I want everybody to understand that we're going to, that when we start looking at the zoning ordinance, we're going to be looking at our zoning ordinance, and not, not some sort of, some sort of case or statute coming in from left field, on city law, I mean on state law, excuse me. And I'm just, I'm just preparing for the, for the hearing on the merits later on, and I think that's fair, and we don't, and you, as the decision maker, need to understand as you, and keep, keep in mind that we are under the home rule laws of the state of Texas, and that, that generally excludes state law.
So your point being that you don't like the, the vote of, taken for affirmative votes?
No, sir, I'm not addressing that. I haven't had time to even look at that. This was a surprise to us, we were not given any, any information on this prior to right now. And that, that's, that's one of my concerns, I don't want any more surprises, or ambushes, you know, because we don't have, you're asking me to make an opinion on it, well, I guarantee you, the city attorney, Mr. Allen, wouldn't, wouldn't be willing to tell you what, what their position is on this, if somebody just shows you this, without doing, having a chance to brief it. And that's going, that's also going to fall over to my next point. And let me just make my next point, and maybe it'll answer some of this question. Mr. Cho, Attorney Cho has filed a Freedom of Information Act request, for us to be able to obtain their file, the city planning department's file on this, and the last time I talked to him, which was well past the deadline, for responding to the Freedom of Information Act request, he had not gotten anything from them, and I'd be curious to know why he hadn't gotten it.
I have a question, just before, if I might?
Yes, sir.
Just, please, because Mr. Wardlow's referring to information that he did not receive, and I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if maybe we should have received something, or I should have received something, because I don't, I didn't receive anything in particular, as it relates to this case.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
That's a great question, may I answer that?
Please.
I'm going to, I'm going to read you the statute in just a minute, that under our zoning ordinance, once we file this appeal, I can read you the statute, and I can show it to you right here, the planning director is supposed to immediately, immediately transmit to the members of the ZBA, the file on this case and the appeal, so you'll know what's hap, happening, and you can start looking at this, and they have totally violated and ignored our city ordinance having to do with this matter. And, you know, we, on the other hand, and on the other hand, we have given you in our appeal, and we had to give it to you, because we suspected they wouldn't give it to you like they're required to under the law, we've given you our appeal, and we've set out in that appeal what our position is. And we don't even know what their position is, and that's something we need to talk about here today.
It is not, and I think that we really, we, I would advise that we stick within the parameters of this posted item, and the nature of Mr. Wardlow's position can be brought forward when we have a hearing on the merits, if it's a defense to some, to some irregularity, but this is not the time to bring that forward, and I would just suggest that we go ahead and accomplish what we need to accomplish, and I think it would be inappropriate to hear these types of arguments.
This is protocol, Mr. Chairman, members, this is the protocol in having this, having this hearing in 30 or 60 days. And, you know, we're, you're, we're asking you here today to order, order these people to do what they're supposed to under the law. Number one, give you the documents they should have given you over 30 days ago, and number two, comply with our Freedom of Information Act request. And, and you know, until we get all this stuff, we're not getting any due process. And, you know, she's trying to object on a procedural basis, that I can't discuss these procedural issues, and I think you can see, that's, that's counterproductive, and it's certainly not within due process.
I'm at loss for what we didn't get, what you're referring to, but really, our duty is to determine, it's my understanding, whether this activity falls under light manufacturing, like city staff claims that it does, or whether it's actually MH, heavy manufacturing, like your side says that it does. That's really the only question before this board, and we don't, we don't need to listen to a lot of outside sources, and you wouldn't believe how many people have called me, and emailed me, and sent me letters, and wanted me to hear their side before we got to the meeting. Man, I'm not, I don't read any of it, I delete the emails, and I don't want to hear any of it, until we get to the meeting.
I think you're misunderstanding what I'm trying to say, I'm sorry.
You're wanting them to give us something that-
They're supposed to give you the, the appeal papers, so you could see what Mr. Howard came up with in his, in his decision in writing, and, and see what we, we filed on appeal, we're required-
So you're alleging that the city has done something wrong?
I, I don't know, but I, I'm responding to Mr. Adams, I don't think they have, I don't think they've complied with the law. Does anybody disagree with me on that? If you didn't get the documents?
Yes, sir, I disagree, I don't think that they've done anything against the law. All we ever get, all this board ever gets is an agenda, and the cases, we get them the Friday before the Monday we're supposed to be here. That's all we ever get.
Would you like for me to show you the law here in a second?
No, sir.
Okay.
Well, one, one of the issues here is, we're, now we're sitting as a judicial body, we're not sitting as just the ZBA on an individual case.
Correct.
And if there is notice that should have been given, and if there are, if there are papers and things that should have been furnished, I, for one, would, would not feel very transparent and good about dealing with something where somebody's being kept out of the loop, and will have to come into a meeting naked, without the information that they should have had.
It's my understanding that the appeal, which was, which was written, or requested of the planning director's order, was in a document that we're here to set the hearing for today. And so, it is their document that, that it takes, that alleges an error in the planning director's decision, that we are setting the hearing on today. And both the statute and our ordinance require the board to set the hearing on that matter.
And we've done that, so we've basically completed everything, A, B, C, D, and E, at this point in time.
What about the, what about the Freedom of Information Act request that we've, that we have filed? Don't you think it would be fair to order these people to have this stuff to us by the end of this week?
Actually, what the ordinance says is, the appellant must file with the board and the official form whom the appeal is taking a notice of, appeal specifying grounds for the appeal. The appeal must be filed within a reasonable time, as determined by the rules of the board. On receiving the notice, the official, the official from the appeal is taken shall immediately transmit to the board all the papers constituting, constituting the record of the action that is appealed. So we can say that we were not given that information immediately, or we can say immediately is relative, and that staff has not compiled everything that this board or this body needs in order to, to move forward. I don't want to just assume that they deliberately didn't give us the information, if this is indeed what you're talking about, as it relates to our bylaws.
That's one, that's exactly right, that's one of the two things, of course, immediately means right then, but, but now, since y'all, since y'all are not too concerned about them not following the law, ordinance on this, the Freedom of Information Act is important. We, we're entitled, under the law- We, we're entitled under the law, under state law, to get copies of their file and these documents and know what their position is. And, and, and they're not doing that. And, you know, we have the right to go into court and force them to do that if they're not gonna do it, but you guys can order that. Why, we're just asking that they follow the law, and we're showing you what it is in writing, and it just doesn't seem to, she, she's just arguing that we can't talk about this. She's not arguing...
And I reiterate that we cannot talk about this, but I do invite Mr. Wardlow to ask, come, come by, and we can, we can talk about our compliance with the public information request. But it's not on the, the agenda, and we, there's no, it's absolutely parallel to this. It's not about discovery. It's about some, it's just not, it's just not advisable for me, for us to have a dis, a parallel discussion about things that were mailed or not mailed under the Public Information Act. And the insinuation that we haven't complied is just not factual and frankly not correct.
Well, why don't she, are you willing to agree that, that you will comply with it by Friday?
Mr. Chairman, I think this, I, I, I believe that this has taken us way from where we should be. This, we're, we're nowhere where we should be. We are leaving our agenda, what we have in front of us, everything that we're doing right now. I think we'll be doing it again when we have the appeal hearing. Everything that's coming up now, I think will be, it'll be coming up again when we have our appeal hearing. And that date is to be set in the future. This is not the place nor the time for this type of discussion to be taking place.
I agree with that to an extent. Mr. Wardlaw, if there's any, if there's anything that Mr. Wardlaw needs that's been withheld from him, I think he should have it.
Well, this isn't on the agenda, but we, my office complied with the request. If the public is given the understanding that we haven't, it's just what he's saying is not factual.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Wardlaw.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't know what I, I didn't know that I had it, what she's talking about.
You didn't request it, that I know of. It was, Mr. Choate has requested it.
Right.
Yes.
And he's my co-counsel, and if he had it, I would know.
Indeed, but it wasn't on the letter that was delivered to my office that you were also requesting this, the paperwork. And so I, I would feel comfortable with you checking with his office.
I already have. Okay, well, let's move on. I guess we're gonna have to discuss most of this, obviously, at the next meeting, and one, one or two last points. Number one, I would like to give you and everybody else, in this case, copies of our exhibits that we plan to, for the next hearing, so that you can have them in advance. They're sort of voluminous, twenty or thirty pages, and I would like for you to have that so you could look over prior to the, to the actual trial or hearing on the merits. And do you have any prob, problem with that, for me handing those out to you today?
Ms. Bowlen, is that advisable?
As we, as you would be aware, you would not be able to, be not permissible for you to have a pre-look at the evidence in the case, because your decision at the hearing will be restricted to the presentation, the testimony, and the records that are presented to you at the time of the hearing. And so any type of submission, ex parte, so to speak, would be impermissible.
I agree with Ms. Bowlen.
Okay, two last things. Number one, this is an open meeting, and it's my opinion, unless somebody shows me to the contrary, that we can have some public comment. Councilwoman Charlotte Farmer likes, would like to make a brief statement, and we have a gentleman here named Claude Husbuth, who, who ranches out toward Barnhart, and he would like to make a short presentation of his pictures while he's here.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wardlaw, but we're, we're not in a position to hear that right now.
You're not, you're not gonna take a public comment from Ms. Farmer, councilwoman?
Only if, as it pertains to when we set the hearing and so forth, but not about the case itself.
Do you want to say something, Charlotte?
Chairman, I agree, and you are correct, in my opinion, that any public comment would pertain to the item, and any comments about the merit of the case that will come up in the future would not be permissible.
I understand that my comment is that this proceeding, I think, is totally misleading in that the applicants, the proponents and the opponents filed over thirty days ago that they were in protest and disagreed with the planning manager's decision, and asked for an appeal and asked for the hearing in due proper time and to be postponed because of bureaucratic red tape seems so unnecessary and so unpleasant. And we are home rule city, and we have the authority to govern and make our own rules as long as we don't violate laws or regulations. So I disagree. I think the process should have carried out today, and that is my opinion strongly.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer.
May I clarify that our zoning ordinance, Section 2.07.063, appeal to the board, reads, "Any of the following persons may appeal to the zoning board of adjustment, a decision made by an administrative official, a person aggrieved by the decision, an officer, department, or board." So the key is that our own ordinance says, D, "The board shall set a reasonable time for the appeal hearing and shall provide public notice of the hearing and due notice to the parties." You are following our ordinance, which also is reflected under state law. So this opportunity for the board to exercise its proper legal authority to set the hearing is occurring at today's meeting.
Thank you.
I got one question. They're not gonna present these thirty odd pages of, of information and things that, that were, were brought up, but, but I'm, I'm kind of wondering, we've gotten a great deal of material from staff and from your, or from you, and most of it's copies of things. How does that materially differ?
It's different because if you're referring to a copy of state law, the zoning ordinances and the bylaws, those are public records, and they're not particular to the merits. They're just, it's state, it's the law that the board follows, and so it's not, it's objective information, and it's, it doesn't lean to one side or the other. It's for every case, not just this one. Those are the rules.
So this, this request under open meetings, that would also have been open and available public information?
The request submitted by Mr. Choate came to my office. It was for the, the things that were requested, which were copies of various communications related to this case, prior to today, of course, which has been complied with. So it really is parallel, as I was explaining, to today's setting.
So could we see those? We can see this, couldn't we see those?
Well, we have, we have provided that response. I'm, I'm trying to understand what you're saying, and I'm trying to go over...
What I'm asking is, may we see those if they chose to make it available to us, if they get them, if they have them?
Yes.
So we could, we can read what the staff did, how their thinking was, or whatever is reflected in those?
Yes. You, what was released, was released without redaction, and there was no basis for us to request an attorney general opinion. We released the information because it, we considered the information public.
I just want to know if somebody wants me to read it, if I can.
Absolutely, yes. Are you speaking of prior to the hearing? Well, I would say it, it would be, I'd have, I believe it is what the staff would provide to you in the hearing. So I would just reiterate that you should refrain from seeing any substantive materials on the case until the time of the hearing. So...
So don't read.
Right, but they're not being provided to you. But if they are provided to you in the hearing, that would be fine. If they're provided before the hearing, my view would be that it's seeing the subject matter that would be presented to you on the record before the hearing, and that would not be permissible.
Yeah, my problem is, I'm a little older, so if, if I get thirty pages from him and ten from you and ten from somebody else for a meeting, and I've gotta read forty something pages and come to a conclusion about it, and, and then have a meeting in the same afternoon, that might be a lot of work for me.
So what is it that, well, when the board chair calls for the hearing, he will conduct it according to the bylaws. And I don't think it necessarily requires staff or any of the parties to provide the information that was provided to Mr. Choate, but I'm sure that the planning director will go over all of the details as, and you can inquire of him the nature of his decision when he's here before you with that documentation at the time of the hearing.
Because, you know, in our general information that we receive, it says, the staff met, we drove out and looked at the property, we saw this was down true over here, and this was true over there, and we looked at that, and we thought, you know, this is probably not something that's gonna fit in the neighborhood as well as it should, or if you do it, it needs to be moved over here. So we get a lot of input about what the staff's reaction was, and we're encouraged to go look at the, the request. So this is a little foreign to me, and this is sort of backwards.
It is different. Well, it's just different, and what the, the hearing, you are a quasi-judicial board, so I wouldn't recommend site visits and, as you know, other types of communications. But if we stick to the protocol, if you stick to the protocol in our bylaws, you will be following what we're required to do in conducting this quasi-judicial hearing, and you will be developing a record which can be the basis of, of an appeal from your decision, should there be one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I just make a couple of quick comments?
I like Mr. Rourke's question, and interestingly enough, Mr. Adams just read, read the ordinance was that they're supposed to transmit their file to you immediately, and now she's saying you can't see anything. It's, it's totally off-base and contradictory. And the last thing I want to tell you before we shut down is, I urge each and every one of you to go look at the Barnhart frac sand operation, and the frac sand operation over on Hughes Street, off of North Bell Street, before this next hearing, and familiarize yourself with those. And I think it'd be relevant for you to know that and see them yourself.
Mr. Allen?
Mr. Chair, until that last comment, we were pretty much of the opinion that as long as city count is counsel for the city's comfortable with it, we are too. But there is a matter of relevance, and that's a point we'll make when we're heard. So as far as your viewing the site, and I don't want to scare your counsel here, that's fine. Everything that occurs out there, we hope to make an open book. As far as confusing this issue with other uses that are not under the same regulatory structure, that's inappropriate. That's just a statement I felt compelled to make.
Thank you, sir.
I have a few suggestions, when you're ready to hear it, as to how, some particulars on how the hearing should be carried out, but I don't want to get ahead of you here. When you're ready, I'd be glad to.
Make them now.
Okay.
You're not, because this has established the protocol.
Very good, very good. And I, I'm, with regard to Mr. Wardlaw and Mr. Choate, I'm sure that they'll have no problem with this. Feel like it'd be important for the participants, the appellant and the applicant, to exchange copies of anything they submit to the clerk for the hearing that's coming up. As they're submitted to the tribunal or to the city office, then we would copy each other. That's what I would suggest.
I want to say that one more time.
Okay. If we file something to be considered by this tribunal with the court, we just send a copy to the other side.
Send it back first.
Yes, yes. So I would suggest that as one of the rules. The, it would be a good idea, I think, and would simplify the hearing if the parties agreed or were obligated to exchange a list of the witnesses that they intend to call, say, two weeks ahead, and exchange a set of the exhibits they intend to present, say, a week or five days ahead of the hearing. I think that would be a good idea and would save time while we're in the hearing. I would request that someone basically identify the set of rules that'll govern the proceedings. I think I know what they are. I know where the zoning ordinance is, and, but just that someone reaffirm that.
They are the bylaws, which I've referred to several times. And it's Section 5.06, it's available in city records, and I can certainly make, anyone who requests these bylaws, which have the rules for conducting the hearing, I can certainly make that available.
All right. And so any evidentiary objections would be governed by that?
Yes, and Section 5.10 states that the board shall not be bound by strict rules of evidence, and, you know, so therefore, I think the idea is to avoid repetitious testimony, and it's, it's here.
That takes care of that.
What the board is going to do.
As far as the amount of time, our best idea is that we'd, we'd ask for at least two hours for our part of the presentation, or as a minimum, or equal time as the appellant's in order to present the evidence part of it. It might also be a good idea to have a, a status conference of sorts on the January agenda, so that if there are any other issues that come up in the meantime, they, we can discuss them before the day that there's a hearing.
Fair enough.
Right, and with, right, and with regard to your view on ex parte, this is not a legislative bar, it's a quasi-judicial, so I'll just go ahead and reaffirm my position with the board in a, in an opinion about ex parte, site visits. I, I'm just not comfortable with that, and I'll, I'll advise the board.
Certainly. Well, I hope I made it clear that you're gonna be the last word on that as far as the city's concerned, but I also want to make it clear on Mr. Fluger's behalf that we're not...
Right, because the evidence will be presented...
Okay, sure.
And additionally, the danger of a site visit without a quorum, I mean, unless after the hearing was called to order, and we took a bus, and the quorum went to the site as part of an evidentiary case, that, that I could see, but they're really acting as a judicial body, and so I think we need to make sure they're, that they act together as a quorum and just follow some basic rules that don't apply to legislative bodies.
I understand and I accept that.
Okay, beautiful.
So those were the suggestions I had, simply about how the matter would be conducted. And if there's any questions or anything on that, I'd be glad to address those.
Does the board have any questions, Mr. Allen? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. That's all been established. Our next meeting date will be, our next regularly scheduled meeting date will be at 1:30 Monday, January the 5th, and then next, Magnes Convention Center. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Adams, seconded by Mr. John. All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned.